Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I congratulate you to live by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone in the audience here and those viewing us at home. Uh, Mr. Fordy. Item three, minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 17th, 2012 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 17th, 2012 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Oh, excuse me. I should be abstaining, I believe, on the 17th. I apologize. I don't believe I was present on the 17th.
Oh, I'll second the motion.
So if, uh, let the minutes reflect that, uh, Mr. Prisco seconded the motion on the 17th and I abstained because I wasn't present. Sorry, I missed it. I'm sure it went by very quickly.
My recollection is that it did.
Your recollection.
All right. Uh, any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero one abstention.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 27th, 2012, I'm sorry, I apologize. December 27th, 2012 regular session minutes as written.
Second, Alan.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 27th, 2012 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for November 2012 in the amount of $5,282.9 as follows. Coleman and Page, General, $2,618.9. Coleman and Page, P.C. Labor, $2,644.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone here for public comment? Going what's going twice, gone, public comment. Item six, introduction of the new fire chief. Mr. Vali Konas.
Board members, welcome. I'd like to introduce William Warnock, who was going to be appointed and sworn in shortly as our new permanent fire chief. As you know, he's been serving, uh, in the capacity since Chief Harris retired from the position. And we all know the chief, we know him well. Chief, if you don't mind, I'd ask you to introduce your family, who's all here this evening.
Sure. That's my oldest son Ryan, my youngest son Arjay, my middle son Reed, and my wife Kim.
Welcome. I just wanted to mention that we went through a civil service hiring process and both Bill and Deputy Galvin took the exam and they did an outstanding job in the assessment center. It's a civil service department for those who may be watching on TV and don't know what that means, which means that I, as the appointing authority, need to make a decision based upon knowledge, skills, and ability, but we also look at respect, knowledge, and leadership. And those things come out as being very critical and very important to the department. And I want to thank Bill and wish him well and give him an opportunity at his swearing-in ceremony, which will be coming up very shortly, to be officially sworn in as a permanent member of the department. There'll be some additional appointments that follow once the chief is sworn in officially, and that'll be the permanent appointments for deputy and for captain also. And those will follow once we proceed with the appointment of our new chief. So, William, I don't know if you have anything to say, but congratulations. We're glad that you're here this evening. And we're glad that your family is here this evening. We know that there's always college things that come into play, so I know that it's nice to schedule this while your family is on.
Can I say a couple of words?
Please.
Thank you. I heard that. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, Mr. Vali Konas. For the past nineteen months, I've been the active fire chief. You guys have been very cooperative. Leadership has been great, and you've really helped me out doing my job, and I appreciate that a lot. I would also like to thank the members of the North Reading Fire Department. They do a difficult job every day. They do it well, and I'm proud of them. Most importantly, I'd like to thank my family. My wife Kim, my boys, I already introduced them, Ryan, Reed, and Arjay. Without them, I wouldn't be able to accomplish anything. So, thank you. I look forward to working with you. Thanks a lot.
Good luck, Ashen.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say that, of course, Billy comes from a long line of firefighters. He had his grandfather before him, his father before him, and you've certainly grown into the position, and I've been favorably impressed, Bill, over the last nineteen months that you've taken over, and you've done an excellent job and much continued success for many years to come.
Thank you.
I'd like to say, congratulations on a terrific job you've done the time you've been in the interim chief position. Showed me a lot when you came before us, capital planning. You really, it was impressive, I must say, so.
I know.
I know, but you're the man at the top, so it all goes back to you, so best of luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Hary?
I'd like to congratulate Bill, too. And I think we have a real leader here. He's been very instrumental in, uh, all the, taking all the work that the ALS committee did and put it into action. He's been participating as part of the community impact team and been very engaged in that, and he's been a pleasure to work with. He's just a great gentleman and a great leader.
Thank you, sir.
And I wish you a lot of success going forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Prisco?
Yeah, I want to congratulate you and your family on your official promotion filing. Nineteen months, it's amazing. That's pretty slow, actually. I thought it would've been a lot longer than that. But no, seriously, congratulations, and I want to thank you as well for always allowing me to come in and see you, open door policy. I do appreciate that, and I think you've done a fantastic job, and I do look forward to continuing to work with you and all your staff.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Fordy? So, just to make it a full house, I'll, uh, you know, it's only been seven months. You're the only chief that I've had the pleasure of working with, but I felt really impressed. I've worked with chiefs in other communities, so I will say you're doing a great job thus far, and I congratulate you and your family on the perfect.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, I need to, can we go back on an item that I?
Can we revisit the minutes for December 27th?
I inadvertently made the motion to accept the minutes, uh, to approve the minutes for December 27th executive session. That's one that I recuse myself from on the, on a matter that I have a relative, and so can we revisit?
Mr. Chairman, I move to reconsider the acceptance of December 27th executive session minutes. The approval.
Right.
So, I move to reconsider.
Second. An emotion to reconsider. Mr.?
Salo's available.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. One and four zero one abstention.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 27th executive session minutes.
Second. The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero one abstention.
Sorry about that.
You got that? All right, I did the same thing on the 17th.
We'll get our act together at some point. Item number seven, change of manager. Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the change of manager for all alcohol committure license for Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge, Inc., 123 Main Street, from Donald H. White to Rita A. White.
Ronald.
I'm sorry. It does say Ronald, I just can't read it.
Second.
The motion, and I have a second. Any discussion?
The print is small.
Perhaps. The representative from Kitty's could come up and explain.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, just as a segue, again, you know, the untimely passing of Mr. Ronnie White, who's a tremendous member of the community, obviously necessitates this action. Rita has been his partner for, I don't know, fifty-eight years or thereabouts, you know, and I think she, uh, she knows a little bit about the business, and I think this is a...
It's the anchor business in town.
It's the anchor business in town, no doubt about it. I think this is just a natural progression as far as what's being proposed, and I would strongly support the motion for us.
Also, talking about anchor business, I talk to people that, they, you know, run into people, "Where are you from?" "North Reading." These people can be from all over the place. Kitty's, that's the first thing they say.
Institution.
Very true.
I don't know if you're aware, but, you know, Kitty's phone number is 4541, and ours is 4451. We take a lot of Kitty's calls.
You take a lot of waters.
Well, that's why my shower water didn't get...
Angel's got a kitchen running out the back.
So, I think it's just a matter of routine, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Anything further?
Don't make her speak.
No. We just took care of it.
I'm not a speaker, but she is, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Very welcome.
And again, thank you for all that you do supporting the community.
And we will keep doing it, hopefully. Yes.
I'm sure you will.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, Steve.
What are we, skip eight and nine for now? It's a little early for the item eight. Go to number ten, vote to establish a gift account, emergency management. Was, do you have anyone coming in?
No, Theo is not coming in, but you do have a letter from him that he's requesting that there be a gift account. The purpose is for, um, any items that are deemed appropriate through the emergency management department with the approval of the town administrator, and they've indicated here new building, shelter equipment, generators, pumps, barricades, supplies, and operating expenses. I would shy away from operating expenses, to be honest with you. I think that that's something that we can cover through the budget. However, in terms of the other items, I do agree that they're appropriate for the purposes of the gift.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move to establish an emergency management gift account to fund purchases the emergency management department has approved by the town administrator.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Just one thing in relation to Mr. Kuleopolis. He had a real health scare the last couple of months.
Sure did.
Yes. And fortunately, he's back on the mend and doing very well, but a very serious health scare, on which he's had, uh, great treatment, and is on the road to recovery and is doing very well, so I'm happy to hear it, announce it, and hopefully continue to service, continue to service in the capacity it has been for so many years. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Good to know. Thank you, Mr. Larry. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I was going to go both.
If you don't, it's okay. Come on, I thought I already... Item twelve, license renewals, S&amp;M Subway.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following committure license to expire December 31st, 2013, subject to all regulatory department requirements. S&amp;M Subway of North Reading, Inc.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Vali Konas said, "They're operating on an emergency or a temporary..."
Temporary license or temporary letter which indicated their failure to, um, to commit and apply for the license to result in the business failure.
Mr. Prisco?
Did they give a reason why it took so long for them to respond to this?
None. Busy, maybe they're too busy.
Well, I mean, remember, I voiced my opinion about this last time. I do appreciate the board supporting me and not granting the license earlier, but this kind of behavior, it costs, it costs us money. It costs the town money, it costs your staff more hours than necessary, and I'm not sure if there is a way to have any communication with them if you hand this over to them. Maybe call them in and have a discussion with them, but next year, they need to get on board and meet the timelines in the first request, because right now, I'm going to vote against it because of this. I mean, I like to, I do use their business, I use it, but I think what they're doing is wrong. They may be, this may be the second year in a row they've done this to us. So, the message needs to get to them that they need to follow the rules just like everyone else and stick to the timelines that are, are set out there. We made the effort three times to get this information to them, and they didn't respond. I don't think that's acceptable. I think it's disrespectful to the town and to your staff.
Any further?
This, again, which, what's the address on this one?
This is the one that's located right down at the intersection.
62?
Yes.
Any further?
Other than, you know, I understand your frustration, but I also don't want to see another empty storefront either, on a matter of principle, you know, but, but I understand the frustration.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Four one. Motion carries. Reappointments, appointments, historic district commission, taxation aid committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for reappointment as a member of the historic district commission for term to expire on December 31st, 2015. There are two openings. Patrick O'Rourke, Oak Rock, One Tivity Street. He's an incumbent.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Mr. O'Rourke is an incumbent member of the historic district commission, but an active participant. I would recommend reappointment. Again, we have another opening. One, we need a Realtor. Mrs. Santilli, who has served for a number of years, has opted not to seek reappointment. Under the bylaws, we're required to have a licensed Realtor on the board, so that I would, I know that the town administrator has sent out a, basically a requisition for a Realtor, local Realtor. If there's any local Realtors who are interested in serving on the historic district commission, we ask them to please step forward and contact the town administrator's office, but I would recommend Mr. O'Rourke's reappointment.
Mr. Larry, anything further? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Taxation aid committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reaffirm following names for reappointment as members of the taxation committee, aid committee, as stated in the motion of the October 15, 2012 Board of Selectmen meeting for the terms to expire as follows. Michael Prisco, Board of Selectmen, term to expire 5/7/2013. Mary Prinney, Elder Affairs, term to expire 12/31/2013.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion?
Do you favor this?
Hearing done. Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm going to stay. And one abstention.
Four zero one abstention. Motion carries.
Don't be so modest.
If we can go back to item 11, ambulance abatement. Chief wasn't going to...
Chief provided all the information you had? Correct. There's a very detailed letter that was submitted in support of the application. The application, as you know, we typically look at it against the Hill Burton standards. It doesn't meet that standard, just so you're aware of the fact that the income exceeds what we consider to be that. However, many times someone does request an abatement, we like to bring it before the board, give them an opportunity to consider it and discuss it, whether you approve it or not.
Do you have a recommendation?
Um, my time that I've been here, we've not approved one abatement request that doesn't meet the income standards. This is the first time such a request has come up.
Mr. Prisco?
I did ask the chief before he left, and I know he, he felt that, you know, he wouldn't recommend, but, I mean, personally, I think if there is a way to work out something, kind of a payment plan with this gentleman, I think that would be the suitable. Has that already been offered to him?
No. And we would offer that based upon whatever action comes from this meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think people are in tough times. I think we should try to work with them, but I don't think we can, I mean, if you look at the income, I mean, my recommendation would be, let's try to work with the individual before we do anything. I think it's acceptable to you, Vali Konas, then it'd be nice if we could just work out a payment plan for him.
That was my impression when I went through the materials. Did Ryan stall level or something, or I'd be willing to plan a payment, too.
I mean, the board need to act on it if that's the case, in which case we'll just indicate that the board took no action. If appropriate, if there's been a motion made to withdraw that motion.
No motion's been made.
Then I would suggest that if there's not favoritism, we would just take no action on it.
Yeah, I would just suggest that the administration go back and try and work out some sort of a payment agreement and/or compromise figure. I mean, there's no doubt about it that, you know, economic times are difficult, even with the income level that's been stated, it's still a lot of money to come up with.
Sure is.
And if we can come up with some sort of a compromise and payment plan, that would be helpful, and if the individual's insistent and wants it to come before the board, you know, then we'll, again, then we'll consider it, but until all the other options are exhausted, I think, a little premature.
Is this individual uninsured altogether?
No, in the case that there was insurance, but the insurance is not, it's not a local insurer that organizes it.
It was one following blue cross.
Anthem. No, anthem, no, anthem is a...
Are they here?
Oh, yeah.
So, is this a case of, is this a case he hasn't gone back to try to get them to pay?
We're not sure of the circumstances, but the amount that was paid...
The insurance paid substantially less. Something, the bill was in excess of twenty, $200, and the insurance had paid $600 and something dollars, so it was about somewhere around $1,500.
So, when we put out a bill to someone that has Medicaid or Mass help, we get a reimbursement of about 50%, and we don't chase that?
No, because by law, we're required to accept it.
You can't do that. And this was not even half the bill that was paid.
But we're required by law to accept those payments that come from the federal government.
Close the case.
So, I'd be in support of Steve's motion from the point of view of...
Just a suggestion.
Bringing it back to either work out a payment program or negotiate some settlement.
Okay. Great. I don't think no action on item nine, I don't know, item 11. I believe I, uh, recycling committee members are up in the hallway, and I'd like to go back to item nine, amend the trash policy. How are you doing? Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. For number eight, yes. Set a particular thing.
No, trash, too.
Nope.
Okay.
Nope. Good. Mr. McGrath, would you like to come forward? We're taking up item nine, your baby. Remind the trash. Oh, yeah, yeah. We're moving speedily, we hope to continue to do so, so.
Good try.
So, we're following up from the December 3rd presentation that I made on behalf of the recycling committee and the DPW to institute a trash barrel limit, reducing the trash barrel limit to three 35-gallon trash barrels. And then, we've, in discussions about what the visible recycling is, the visible recycling policy now on the books is that if the hauler sees recycling in a trash barrel, they are not obligated to take it. We're, we're hoping to get to something like, the committee would like to see something that Reading has, where there's, the recycling bin is out with the trash and the trash doesn't get picked up if the recycling bin's not out there. And I'll have my presentation in front of me, you have it, you saw the results that the other communities we've looked at going towards. The whole idea we're trying to do is stabilize, either maintain the current level of the trash fee, or if possible, even try to lower it. It's all about money, it's trying to avoid the tipping fees, bulk up the, um, the recycling, lower, lower what we're bringing to Covanta. That, that rate's going up another $2 a ton next, come July 1. I don't, right now, I don't think you want to lay any bets, it's going to go down a significant amount of money, but, you know, it's usually a $2 to $3 increase per year on the tipping fee. I think it's $71 this year, it's going up to $73 next year. The whole idea, right now, this year, I just, before I was, I got, before I came tonight, I got the results from JRM and punched them into my spreadsheet. Right now, we've, through, through six months of the fiscal year, we've avoided $41,763 in tipping fees, you know. Trash right now is projected based on what we've done. I haven't done a year-to-year comparison enough time to do that, but we're saving, we're down, they're going to be down about 115 tons right now, projected. But, you know, one big rainstorm in a flooded basement, and that blows that right out of the window, so we've got a ways to go, so. Mr. Hary?
I am very much in support of the recycling, and I like the idea of maybe reducing the number of barrels, but there's got to be a method of somebody that really has a need for more than three barrels to pay for additional pickup. Second is, I can't support the idea of not picking up the trash if the recycling bin is not out on the street. It appears that the process that takes place is, the trash pickup starts on one end of town, the recycling starts on the other end of town. They pick up recycling in front of my house around 7:00 in the morning. I have to put the recycling bin out in the evening or be up and remember to get it out first thing in the morning. And as soon as you empty the recycling bin or a barrel on a windy day, they're all over the place. So, what I do is, I bring my barrel out and I bring the trash, the recycling bin in. And people on the other side of town probably just do the opposite. Somewhere in the middle, yes, the two of them are out at the same time. It makes no sense. It's unworkable. There's got to be another way of dealing with it.
And I, just to that, of my, in my neighborhood, they come within an hour of each other, so... In the neighborhood that Mr. Larry and I are in, as people know it, is Looney Hill, aptly named, it's just the opposite of what happens in Mr. Hary's neighborhood. Our trash gets picked up by about 7:00 in the morning, and recycle could go there until 4:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon.
Yeah, late in the afternoon.
So, it's just the opposite. So, and I know it's tough to tell a hauler what to do, but it's, it's going to be difficult to enforce. And it's difficult, you know, I think Reading, my personal opinion, from what I've witnessed, I think, you know, at the end of the day, you're relying on the guys behind the pickup, doing the trash pickup and riding the back of the truck to making, enforcing your program, too. It's not perfect. I'm not, I don't, I'm not standing here to say this is the magic bullet here, you know.
I think personally, we could accomplish more by doing a little more public, bring it out to the public and continue that.
And I think with the reduction of the number of barrels, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, reduction of the number of barrels is certainly going to enhance...
Yes.
The recycling, you know.
And we agreed that I would be providing quarter, I'll give it to Mr. Fordy on a monthly basis, and he can convey it if he feels necessary, but at least on a quarterly basis next fiscal year, coming before the board to give a quick update. You know, I could do it just via email, or if you want me to come and speak, that's fine, too. I don't mind the FaceTime on local cable. FaceTime on local cable, you know.
Yeah, no, I, you know, since we met with you last, we had the first discussion of this, I've had an opportunity to talk to a lot of people in town, especially the seniors.
Yep.
And I definitely haven't really shadowed one senior that was really in favor of this, and you have to understand from their perspective, so I'm not sure, have you and your committee reached out to the senior community to get any feedback from them?
I did. We have, um, our member emeritus, Greta Baresi, who's actually the person, I ran everything We have our member emeritus, Greta Baresi, who's actually the person, I ran everything by her, and she said, she's like, you do it, you know. I'm just saying, I did, I don't do this, try not to do this in a vacuum, but, you know, we did, I did, Greta's always been, for the committee, for the 20 years she was on the committee, was always bringing that point of view, if you will, to the committee. And before I even made the presentation to the committee, to the board in December, I actually called Greta and talked to her about it, and, you know, paraphrasing, she says, if you open a can of soup, you get mail, and you get, you know, and you buy a newspaper, you got recycling every week. And that, she was pretty, you know, she says, you know...
But the feedback, if I could just share it with them for, just a little bit of the feedback. You've got to understand, though, from their perspective, some of them have long driveways, so in their case, they only want to make that trip down to the end of driveway once to drop off the barrel, and then bring it back. They pull up their recycling because they don't have a tremendous amount of it. Not saying they don't have any, but in their, and I understand their argument, it goes along with what Mr. Misery was saying, you're going to force them to bring their recycling out along with a barrel every week, you know, that's a lot on some of these seniors. And when they're very light with stuff in it, they blow down the street and no one, you know, they don't want to be walking down the street in the wintertime to go grab their barrel. So I think, I would be against this idea, only because of them. But let me ask you, what is your goal? Is your goal to save on trash, or is your goal to increase recycling?
Well, if you increase recycling, you save on trash. So they go hand-in-hand, there's correlation there.
Yes.
So what I'm trying to do, the goal is, the goal is, right now, round numbers, it costs $200,000 for recycling trucks to drive around our town every Tuesday to pick up the recycling.
Okay.
In a perfect world, that avoided tip fee is $200,000. Trying to, that's been the break-even point we've been shooting for for years.
So what about those towns that do, where you buy the bags, where you have to pay to put the trash?
We've done that. Pay-as-you-throw, we were one of the first communities to do that. In fact, they were talking about that at, Mr. Fodi and I were at a meeting last week at the DEP about contracting workshop, and pay-as-you-throw was, you know, the whole issue. I mean, I mean, well, I know, I can't speak for Mr. Connavalli, we haven't had a lot of discussion on pay-as-you-throw, but Mr. Handlin, Dave Handlin's big issue was the handle, there was the administrative side of that. If you look at what the solid waste budget is, and you're going to make that up with a trash fee versus the, with a pay-as-you-throw fee versus the trash fee that people pay now, there's a lot of money being handled, and he was feeling his discussions with the finance department that that was going to be a burden. It was going to be a challenge to be able to handle that kind of money coming in. You're talking a half a million dollars. And that was one of Dave's major objectives, objections to that. And we had pay-as-you-throw.
But does it work in other towns? Put aside the cost part of it, the administration part of it.
Sure.
Does it work?
Yeah, I mean, there are, every community that has pay-as-you-throw, there's different, they have a different take on how they do it. Some have one free barrel, and then you pay for anything over that, which is something that Bob kind of suggested after the third barrel, you can add it. And a lot of communities that they do is, they put it in place, they play with it, they tweak it, and, you know, Malden's done it recently, and it's working for them. I will say this, it's working for them, but you'll see the surrounding communities being affected by it, because what's happening is, a lot of times is, I got a, you know, I got a sister who lives in the next town over, I'm bringing my trash to her house because she's not paying anything for it. Or she's paying a fixed fee regardless of how much she puts out. So it may be working well for those communities, I don't know so much about the surrounding communities that don't have the same type of program. But, I mean, it's all, it's, it works, but it's what you want to get out of it also. I mean, like Ed said, the difference between pay-as-you-throw and having a fixed fee is, you know what you're going to take in on a fixed fee, whereas pay-as-you-throw, people start to, and people will start to recycle more, because they're not going to pay for the bags. Problem is, is you may have a deficit now, and those bags may need to be more expensive the following year.
I think we were talking about anywhere from $4 to $6 a bag.
Yeah.
Wow. As far as, you know, what the costs were going to be in order to make it work. You know, so that, you know, the seniors might put out one bag every two weeks, other people putting out two or three bags a week, all of a sudden, you know, it's 12, $18 a week to get rid of your trash. So therein lies the balance of things, and that's why we went to what we do now, is just a straight across.
The other challenge here...
Is it fair and equitable? No. You know, but as far as minimizing the costs and sharing the responsibility, and then encouraging the recycling, you know, that was the whole idea. But the pay-as-you-throw is pretty expensive.
One of the other challenges we face here is distribution of the bags.
Right.
We're a small community, and having, where would the, where would the bags be distributed? That was a challenge. There was town hall, personnel went out and talked to the various businesses, and I don't think it was warmly embraced, I think they were going along.
Before, we were selling the stickers. We were selling the stickers, and we're on a roll. You know, that was pretty easy. Well, yes, you're selling something somewhat bulky, it's going to take up space in the retail space, then it's a question of, you know, they're going to pay up front for it, so the town gets their money up front, okay, they're purchasing the bags up front, and then, instead of us chasing them, you know, are they going to be laying out that kind of cash in order to be good members of the community? There was some resistance from the local merchants.
And you get the small servant that says, oh, Ryers, right? Well, where's Ryers going to put a couple cases of trash bags?
And you're going to charge them for it.
We're going to get them to buy the pallet, so it was just like, okay, now you have the logistics behind the pay-as-you-throw. And these were just, the various things we're looking at, and as Mr. O'Leary said, that's why they kind of, we went to the trash fee, it was cleaner.
I think communities cleaner, you know, bags is...
Okay, is there nothing to question?
Yes.
What about those communities that buy the barrels, right, and they provide them the large barrels, that's all you can use, you can't use your own barrel, the barrels that...
That's for a particular type of truck, the common pickers, I see them.
That's called single stream.
Okay.
It's called single stream. It's not, when you start peeling the onion, it's, there's a lot of details there that need to be negotiated and worked out. Who owns the barrels? Who puts the money up? Does the vendor put up the money? Then you're going to longer-term contract, five-year contracts.
I think you're talking about trash, though, Ed, not recycling?
No recycling.
Both? Just trash?
But even if you did trash, and you're going to have those special 64-gallon barrels...
It's expensive. It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to, one of the things, again, Ed mentioned that we were at a seminar last week, one of the things they talk about is, when you do something like that, and you're probably talking about a long-term contract for the hauler with the city because, with the town, because what's going to happen is, they have to recoup the cost of those, if the town's not going to pay for it up front, and it's included in the, in the, in the contract that they have to provide them, then they're going to want minimally a five-year contract, if not more, because they need to recoup the cost of those barrels.
So, and to that extent, going back to Dave Handlin, there was some concern, he, before, you know, one of his, you know, it was on his list as he was heading out, but wanted to do some more research on that. There's some towns that are similar to us as far as roadways. He meant, I remember him, Goffstown was one of them, I forget a couple other ones, he knew somebody up in Goffstown. The concern there is, what happens in wintertime? When you have, well, not this winter, or last winter, but, you know, two winters ago, when you have, you know, four feet of, four feet of snowbanks on the side of the road, and the picture Central Street, you know, trying to get up there, and now you've got 64-gallon barrels filled with trash, and they have to be placed out a certain way, or the truck can't pick them up. Because that's why, that's the thing, the truck picks, the guy doesn't have to get out of the truck, so he's not getting out of the truck. And, you know, those are the issues, you know, that was some of the things.
Thanks for explaining, because I was always curious.
Yeah. The other issue in that, too, is they, when you do that, usually you have single, they're called single-stream recycling. So you have a, most towns do a 64-gallon barrel for trash, and a 96-gallon barrel for recycling. There's some humorous stories about Seattle, when they said you could throw everything in there, and they're getting to the center to sort the stuff, and they're finding air conditioners, television sets, all kinds of stuff that shouldn't be there. The other issue is, and I have, I haven't heard this answer, no one's given me a good comeback on this, but I know the paper mill in Lemonster owned by North Shore, North Shore Recycled Fibers, he'll, he has come flat out and said that if you go single-stream recycling, I don't want your paper. Because glass shard, the glass breaks, the shards get in the paper, it messes up their machinery. He doesn't want, if you go single-stream, he won't accept your paper at his plant. The other issue is, they say approximately 30% of the paper becomes contaminated, can't be recycled, and now, who's going to pay for, you know, who's paying for that? And you know, if you're a haul, if someone's, somewhere along the line, we're going to be getting stuck with helping to cover that cost, or getting rid of that 30%. So I just, I haven't heard that explained, no, everyone's kind of like, oh, yeah. I haven't got a good answer on that one yet, so I'm not, we haven't brought that forward.
Ms. Robinson.
Ms. Robinson, 374 Park, chairman, person of the recycling committee. In regards to the issues with the seniors, I work with a lot of seniors, so in my real job. So I understand that. I also live on 374 Park Street, which, when we switched from the recycling center to pickup, I was not a happy camper, because my driveway, where my driveway is, and I'm on a very busy street, and I have no sidewalk on my side of the street. So I had to readapt how I did my recycling, plus I have a hill down my driveway, and it's a little iffy in the winter. So with the six months that we have from now until the proposed change in July, there would be a lot of, I foresee a lot of education, understanding we might do, you might learn how to do recycling different, or set up something with, I know the youth group has done a lot of volunteers with elders in regards to assisting. There may be a program we can work with that, and looking at how to make the trash and the recycling easier for elders. When I have, I also do not like lugging down a big trash barrel in my bins. Sometimes I have two bins, I have a cart, a special cart I have now. So sometimes now, I don't, I don't put my trash in my barrel, because I have one plastic bag. I bring the plastic bag down, so I have one less barrel to bring up in the morning. Recycling, I'm like one of the last people at 7:00 at night that get my recycling picked up. So regardless of what week it is, who puts what out, there's always some kind of issue with things being blown away. My street, I haven't lost a barrel recently, or a bin recently. But that's going to happen no matter what, regardless of which day you put your recycling out, which week you put your recycling out, or your trash. You might look at doing it differently. If you don't bring a trash barrel, you don't need the full trash barrel, you bring a bag, and then you have bins instead of the trash, trash barrel. So there's different ways of looking at it. When I have a little less recycling plastics, I bring a smaller bin that I have, I have put stickers on it. So there's different ways of doing it than just thinking I have to put it in the big green bin. So, because that is heavy, and that's very awkward to bring around, and I have no issue with that whatsoever, because it is very difficult to negotiate that, especially down a long driveway. If you are using a long driveway and you're bringing your trash down, how are you doing it? Are people driving? Well, if they're driving, you could do both. If you're not, you just look at reallotting, how you're doing it, and it might work better for you in the long run all around. So there is an educational component, and it can be done. Is it going to be a problem for some people? Absolutely. But everything we do is going to be an issue for somebody. And I think there's different ways of looking around, doing it differently, that will work for a lot of the issues some of the seniors have. I could be wrong, but I think it's workable.
Mr. Fodi. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ed, as you know, I was on board when you came back in December, and since the, the issue I have is, since the transcript put the editorial endorsing it, I've gotten several phone calls, I won't say a great deal, but I've gotten several phone calls with the same concerns, the fact that the recycling truck in certain neighborhoods go by before the trash truck, and then they bring their recycling bins in. If this was approved, would you consider going to DEP for one of their grants for mandatory recycle enforcement coordinator? Because that would allow us the opportunity to have this person out there. It's a grant that the Department of Environmental Protection allows, or gives a two-years' worth of a part-time employee to the community, and that would allow that person to go out and drive the neighborhood that gets maybe their recycling picked up first, and can affirm that they in fact had recycling out, I mean, we wanted a consideration.
Yeah, I mean, we're, right now, as you know, we have two grants from the DEP we've got this year. One's technical assistance that helped with this process here. The other, and they're going to help us with the public area recycling, Sharon Dushia. We have so many hours of her time at our disposal, and we got the public area grant for to purchase some public area recycling containers. Always, I think what, Mr. Fodi's saying, the DEP will, they bring this on, and this person works for maybe adjacent towns, and they bring a person on, and they pay for the salary, and they help, they work with the towns. You know, we, we look at the, every year the grant comes out, we look at what's feasible for us. You know, some of that stuff, it's just, you know, it's more than what our committee can handle, or it's just not appropriate for our town. I always say, we can always use a couple more of those, you know, public area recycling bins somewhere, you know, and have them handy, so if we can get those, that's great.
Ms. Romeo.
You know, when you say mandatory recycling, that really gives the wrong connotation to the whole thing, that it, to me, that just smacks of Gestapo tactics. And I know, I know it's not, and I'm sorry to hear it. I haven't spoken with Mike Prisco, but you summed up the whole thing for me, Mike, when you mentioned that scenario about long driveways, and only putting out recycling periodically, because that's exactly what I do. I have a long driveway, and I have to save it up. I'm alone, and I have to drive it down to the end of my driveway, I have to wrestle with the bin, and that's exactly what happened today. I just towed them out in the hallway. I had one bag, I usually have one bag, and I had three cans, and six plastic bottles, and half a bag of newspapers and junk mail, and that's all that was going to go out in the bin. It wasn't enough to fill it up, and not enough to wrestle with it and get it down there, where the end of my driveway, or road, or whatever you want to call it, is all muddy. So I wasn't about to put it out tonight. So that one bag of trash, which included a lot of smelly stuff left over from when I cleaned my refrigerator yesterday afternoon before the game, would have sat around for another week because they wouldn't pick it up. So I, you know, I think it's really unfair, and, and I don't like the whole thing. What do I have to do? Hire a private hauler to come and take away my trash? I'm paying enough now, as it is in this trash thing. I'm really unhappy with the whole proposal. It's really disheartening to have lived here this long and find that we've come to this, that I'm told that I better put out trash. What am I going to do? Go around the neighborhood and pick up cans so I can put out trash? I mean, recycling.
So just in fairness, Ms. Romeo and I spoke about this last week, and she was one of the ones who, and I, I know her house, and I know the distance she has to go to bring her, her trash and recycling, so that's, you know, her reason alone is one of the reasons that I've kind of relooked at it, and see the concern that you have, so I do appreciate that.
Well, you know, I think some of her, the language is a little harsh here, but, you know, if you recall the presentation, when we did the audit last May, there's about 500 households out of, well, 43, 500 or about 4,300 households are not recycling. And this is part of the mechanism to get these people on board. And we, you know, 110 barrels, 110 households about putting out four or more barrels per week. I mean, those are the numbers, and that's what we're targeting. We're not here to, you know, the committee, we've always been trying to do, it's about money. It's about trying to save the town, save the town money. If we don't do the recycling, the trash fee's going to go up because you're going to have to cover the cost to burn it, you know, and so that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to accomplish here. I appreciate Ms. Romeo and others, and what the people you spoke to, fully appreciate that. And we're not trying to go after, you know, the people, we're going after the people who aren't participating, who haven't cared, or just don't bother. Because basically, the people who are participating are subsidizing those people. So that's what we're, that's what we're trying to get to. And maybe it's something we go to three barrels, and we look at it and do some more, you know. I mean, we've always gone, since the get-go, 20 years ago, when we were doing the, Steve Daley formed the recycling committee and charged us to develop a recycling program, and we decided to start out with a drop-off program in the back of town hall here versus curbside, because everyone's going, oh, curbside, because I said, it's easier to go from drop-off to curbside than it is to go from curbside to drop-off, if we, if the monies weren't there. Let's wade into the shallow end of the pool, and get going. We're not, you know, we go baby steps here, too.
Well, getting back to what I said first, okay? Clearly, if there's 500 people that are not recycling in town, you must have some sense of where these people are. And based on that, I have no problems with notices being sent to them, and appealing them to deal with the issue. I can't support the issue of saying, well, if your trash bin isn't out there, don't pick up the trash. Because what it'll do is, it's going to penalize those that put out the recycling and manage the barrels so they're not all over town. There's got to be a better way.
Hey.
I'm in support of reducing the number of barrels, because I think that helps, that sends a message out there, and it, you know, if you're only going to pick up three... You know, if you're only going to pick up three barrels and then people, maybe we'll give a little more thought to doing recycling. Because I know that our volume of recycling, and there's only two of us in the house. We don't have kids, so that may change the ratio a little bit. But we have in weight, you know, four or five times weight of recyclables versus what goes in the,
Right.
the single kitchen bag that ends up in the barrel out on the curb.
You know, the other, one of the, just thinking, you know, the solid waste contract, the DP, the Mr. Connavalli is looking at putting that out, back out, Mr. Greg, is that right? What's the proper phrase?
What is it? Oh, we've already got it out. It's ready to go.
You know, that might be something to the issue about, you know, one truck coming at seven in the morning, the next, 10 hours later, the other truck comes. Maybe it's a coordination with the hauler and resolve that. This is something we can come back to at a later, at another time down the road once we get into it. So, you know.
Prisco?
I understand what your motivation is. I know your goal is to try to fix a problem, but I think what's being proposed now, I've had some time to think about it. I've had some time to talk to people. You're solving one problem, but you are creating another. We are. And I know that's not what your intent is.
Yeah.
Okay, but the feedback is, we are doing that in this case. And I, and I'm in agreement with Mr. Messier as well. I support the idea of reducing the number of barrels.
Yeah.
But I can't go in agreement that you have to have your recycling out at the same time, same time. Because, you know, now speaking with that senior community, I think you are creating a problem for them. I really do.
I, I appreciate that. And I just made myself a note is what I will go back and just so you have some, give you, provide you information is what Reading and Ipswich and the towns we looked at, how do they, what do they do? With the, you know, how do they, how do they approach this?
That would be fantastic.
I would too, you know, it's just, I'm a volunteer. There's only so many times, so many hours, you know.
And I do appreciate your time. And I know you put tremendous amount of time in.
You know, that's something, I might see Sharon tomorrow and I can ask her if that, if there's information readily available or even talk to the people in Reading and see how they approach it and stuff.
Mr. Fordy, do you have something?
I think Steve, go ahead and I'll go.
No, I just want to echo that, you know, I too, since the last presentation that was made, received some feedback from people throughout the community in relation to the proposal and the mandatory recycling and having to have the bin out. And of course, ones I'm hearing from are not supportive of the idea. Haven't had anybody applaud the effort yet. And again, it does create some issues, as Mr. Messier pointed out, from a timing standpoint. People put out the barrels first, like in us out of town, and then recycling later. Particularly if they retire or their work schedule is such, they don't put them all at the same time. It creates a problem in relation to, again, the seniors who might recycle once every two weeks, same thing. So I think the reduction, as I said earlier, I think the reduction in the number of barrels is going to enhance the recycling efforts just by the nature of what we're doing. And if we're talking about even reducing it further another year from now, considering that, certainly it's going to educate the public that, you know, you've got to do something with your trash. And a lot of it, you know, as Meg pointed out, Greta pointed out, it's recyclable. So, you know, do it. And, you know, as far as the scoff laws, I mean, right now, you've got, you know, 88-plus percent compliance. You know, 12% non-compliance, that's a pretty good ratio. Can always be better.
Yeah.
And again, the encouragement is going to come with the reduction of the number of barrels that are available for them to put out. And so, so at this time, I don't think our policy should dictate the mandatory recycling bin being put out with the barrels. Because someone else said to me, what do you want to do? I'm going to put it out there, put a capable soup can in it. One can, you know, or I have to put out the recycled bin with a can, with a soup can in it in order to get my trash picked up. So now I'm in compliance, so now I'm in compliance, right?
I can go on.
No, I just said, that's extreme, right? And I said, I guess, you know, that works.
I'm going to make a suggestion. What was brought up when you were last before is seeing the consensus before we got citizen input. We were all in favor of this.
Yeah.
And that's a large part why we decided to go with three barrels.
Yeah.
I would reduce it to two. If your goal, if your goal is, if your goal really is to get people to recycle, reduce your trash load. You have 500 households that don't put out any recycling. And also, you take into consideration folks like Mrs. Romeo, who puts out one bag of trash and has very little recycling on a weekly basis. You're not impacting them because they can still put their trash out. I'd suggest we consider going down to, make it a two-bag limit. A four-person household.
Twist my arm that hard.
I'm going to bring my third barrel to Mrs. Romeo's house.
But I think that's what we should consider. I mean, that's, that's the step we should make.
Yeah.
I think, after having given this due consideration. So, Mrs. Romeo, I'll hear from you now. I just wanted to get that up. But I want the members to consider it.
I should have suggested that I think one key thing that you really need to do is to educate, educate, educate in, in every way possible, through the media, through the press, through, through television, through our cable system, and through the schools, especially through the schools. Kids can be a tremendous pressure on their parents. And I, I think that's really necessary. And I do programs with third graders coming through the Putnam House. And when I talk to the kids about how much effort it was to sustain their living in, in the 1700s and 1800s in North Reading, how much effort it took just to, to live and to, to provide clothing and what did they do with it once it was not useful to them personally? And how it was reused constantly and how they had to recycle, recycle, recycle? And how we have to do it today? I tell them that in the Putnam House. So when we're talking about 200 years ago, we're still talking about recycling. So talk about it in every way that you can. It'll work. Do it. Kids are a great pressure on their parents.
Mr. O'Leary?
I'm more in favor of phasing it in, going to the three and letting the public know that, you know, next year we're going to two. And rather than the sledgehammer approach. And again, it may very well work and I don't know how many households it's really going to impact. Again, I don't, generally, rarely do I, I put out a second barrel, but rarely is it full, once in a while. Most of the time, it's one barrel a week.
Off the top of my head, the numbers were one to two barrels was about 92% of the population. It was like another 6% put out three, a third, and then there was the rest, 2.5% put out four more.
Jump to two. It's really a small segment.
You don't have to twist my arm that hard on TV, Mr. O'Leary.
And I have, and I put, and I put out, I put out a barrel and two recycle bins. A barrel of recycling and two recycle bins.
I think, I think there's some, first of all, you know, I'd eat the elephant, you know, one bite at a time. But there's another consideration here that probably hasn't been talked about. And that is, okay, we shrink the number of barrels down. And then maybe two or three times or four times a year, people do some, maybe spring cleaning. They, you know.
We've talked, yeah.
All of a sudden, they got five, six, seven piles of stuff out on the curb. How do we deal with that?
Okay, I talked to, Dick and I have talked about this. You know, in the towns that did these barrel limits, there's an element of common sense. The week after Christmas, you know, you're hosting a big family party, you got, you got a third, you got an extra barrel out over the limit. Basically, the towns take it. They, they use common sense at certain times of the year. Dick and I were actually talking, say you had, you know, you had a big, you're cleaning out your house and you got a lot of stuff you want to get rid of. The thought was, call the DPW, so-and-so at this, you know. JRM then knows that that address on that week is going to have extra taken. It's a, it's a one-time thing. If the same household's calling every other week saying, I got six barrels this week, you're going to catch that, you know. There's, there's elements, you know, Dick was saying, we can work on some of these details to fairness and to accommodate people. I mean, if there's a flood like a couple of years ago that may flood where we spiked up, I mean, you're going to say, nope, you can only put two barrels out. You got to keep that moldy, smelly stuff in your garage or your basement for another week? No, that's not going to happen. I mean, that's crazy, you know. So I just, there's, there's common sense into this too, you know.
Also, you can, what I do is I, if I have too much, I wait till the next week and put some more out. And you can, and I don't have a garage, so I have nowhere to store extra stuff. So there's, you don't have to put it out the same week. You can just put it out more the following week. So you don't, it doesn't have to all go out. It's not stinky garbage. Not everything has to go out the same week. So you can put it out more each week. You don't have to do it for seven barrels in one week.
We don't have to make a decision tonight, right?
That's the first reading.
First reading.
Maybe we do a compromise too, in addition to what you're saying is, maybe we do go back and explore the option of doing the two barrels and then pay for the extra bags if you're going to go above that. I know that maybe some administration.
I think that's a pretty big, I think that's a pretty big bite to go to bags.
Yeah.
I really.
Just for the extra, just above your two barrels.
I'm reluctant to do it only because I think once you dive into the bag thing, it's, opens a whole lot of administrative barriers.
Certain bags, production of the bags, putting in the bag, it's, it's costly. If you've looked at it.
Well, with those percentages that Mr. McGrath just said to us, I really do support strongly what Mr. Delaney is proposing.
Very small segment.
If you really want to, I think you phase it. You know, get the sting in control right away. But I, I say, let's, let's hear back from the, from the community on it. And we've heard back in a week already on this one, the first time you brought it up. I'd like another week to let it float around town and get some feedback on it.
Well, it's first reading, so.
Right.
It's not being adopted tonight.
Okay.
So maybe you can report it that the board's considering going from a four-bag limit to a two-bag limit. Would you consider that?
I personally am in favor of phasing it in.
As am I.
I'm going from three to two next year to educate the public, get them used to it, let them clean out their houses a little bit. Give them what she has to clean it up. But really, I'm for phasing it, I'm for embracing the idea of getting down to two. But I'm not going to go from four to two. It's just my feeling. I don't know what everybody else is. Before we start projecting something, why don't we get a, get a consensus then?
I just, my view is based, especially based on the percentages that we've heard. So few households are not within that range of two bags already. So you're putting the burden on those that are producing a lot of trash. And I would imagine that's a large percentage of those 500 households who are not recycling at all. Let alone whether it's every couple of weeks or every three weeks, they're probably not doing it at all. So.
And I'm going to ask you a question. It's probably a tough one to answer. I'm sorry, will you? Is there a correlation between the 500 that are recycling and?
I don't know.
Yeah, I thought, it's kind of tough to.
It's kind of tough to.
I just got to say.
I didn't do, personally do the survey, so I can't speak to that. So it just seems.
If I may, I just want to finish one. The recycling committee, really, I got to give them credit. They put a lot of time and effort into this. And not point, not wanting to point out one person in particular. Every meeting that I go to that I'm on my employer's time, Ed's at those meetings. So I got to, he's very passionate about it. I got to give him credit that, you know, I'm at these four-hour meetings. And again, I'm, you know, I'm on my work time and Ed's on his own time. So I commend you and I know how passionate you are. And he's called me on this stuff several times also. So Ed, I know you've thought it through and done a lot of work on it. So I'm not taking that lightly.
Thank you.
Just two things. Just to remind the board members that his goal is to reduce costs and increase recycling. So if you want to phase it in, you're not helping him really achieve his goal very quickly. But the other question I have for you is, right now, we pay $226 a year annually, right? So if we go to a three barrel or even a two barrel, I assume that cost goes from $226 down to something else?
I think, it's not, not quite that cut and dry. I think you have to look at the contract, the cost of the program.
You don't want to go up.
We're not an enterprise outfit right now. And I think the monies now, you have to, basically the fee has to cover the cost of the program.
The only money you'll save is your tipping fees, but your, your cost is fixed for collection. The company, JRM for collecting is going to charge you that same, because the cost of the same in gas, employees. That doesn't change whether they pick up one barrel a household or four barrels a household. So that, that element doesn't change. The only thing you're going to change is the, is the tipping fee at the, at.
Right now, we're not, we're not, we're back and forth between break even. We subsidize it a little bit. I think we do, still subsidize appropriately. $2,000, we subsidize.
If you said to me, yeah, we could see.
There's about a $30,000, $35,000 subsidy in 2005, 2012.
That's what I was asking, because if you were saying, well, if we go to a two barrel, we'd probably see a 10% or 20% reduction in cost. I think that would also help us make, at least me, help make that decision.
Well, I mean, that's up to the town, the board and the PA and the DPW to determine what the fee's going to be for that, a given year. And I, I mean, if you want to say, I don't think you're going to have too many people hollering.
But based on what Greg's saying, we're already subsidizing it by $30,000.
$35,000.
So you may, you may get it down to a break even vest.
It flips back and forth.
And the thing is, the recycling right now, as Ed said, the goal is to get it, to generate $200,000 worth of savings. And we're at.
Forty, right. We've been getting, we've been averaging about $90,000 over the last couple of years.
So we're still.
Then that kind of supports even more with, with Mr. Delaney's proposal.
Yeah. So I mean.
You should react to that.
Keep in mind that the, you pay, the tipping fee is based on tonnage. It's not based on the number of barrels that have been collected. So you also have the issue of you, if you get to two, you may be still getting what normally might be.
No, because the hauler doesn't have to pick it up. If the hauler, he can't touch it, if he can't lift it, they're going to leave it.
No, I understand, but, you know, some people may be just, you know, put a couple of pitching barrels in a bucket and, and a barrel in and bring another one out and throw it in there so it's not floating around.
I was thinking more someone, you know, stuffing, 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 so the barrel weighs 100 pounds. Well, they're going to be lugging a 100-pound barrel back up the driveway that night because the hauler doesn't, by contract, is not required to take it. So second, quick question, second reading, the next meeting then? We talk?
Yes.
What did I, what did I, phased, phased, I don't know what.
He's had a phase, so it's a 3D2 for a phase. So my proposal goes down to flames, but that's.
That's not the flames, that's just.
Flames, it's progress.
No, that's good.
The phase is what we had. What we gave up here is what we had sort of.
The one thing I'm dead against, the one thing I'm dead against is the issue of having the.
The bin out.
The bin, because it just doesn't make sense.
And I support it and I agree.
I thought the compromise was jumping right to two then.
That would be a very good compromise.
Yeah. I mean, again, it helps fit, helps indicate what their goal is.
Right. And we're not forcing anyone.
I'd like to get some public input on that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'd like to see. I mean, we're talking about these small percentage of people. It's a small percentage.
Mr. O'Leary wanted to get a consensus of the board and the consensus was 3-2 in favor of a phasing approach. But, but I would like to get some public input on reducing.
I'm sure you will hear it.
Sure, and I'll tell them my personal experiences. For member household, we put out on average, one barrel a week and at least three to four recycle bins. So.
That happens with stickers.
If you don't have recycling enough to put out, and I understand if you're in a one-person household, you may not have a lot. But certainly, if you're a family of four, you're going to employ recycling. So get your recycling out. It's part of the education process. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ed. Great job. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Oh, I would suggest that the purpose of the first reading is to state what the board's position is. It's not officially a policy of the board until you go through a second reading and adopt it. But that way, at least you have an opportunity to state what the board's position is. You'll get input on it. You have an opportunity to refine that for your next meeting.
So if we were to look at what's proposed here, would it just be, we're all in agreement, you drop 13?
You mean take out the mandatory cycle?
Yeah, which is 13.
Which is 13.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Number 13.
In the iPad, it's 45 or 51.
Forty-five.
Page 45 or 51.
Oh, the policy.
The policy, the proposal. The reading. Maybe we need to reword it, in other words, we're in favor of mandatory recycling because we have that anyway. So you don't necessarily want to take that out. Basically, we have, we leave it up to the discretion of the, of the hauler to say, there's some recycling.
No, that's different than mandatory recycling. It's different.
Is it?
Yeah.
No, if there's recycling materials in there, they don't have to pick it up.
No, mandatory recycling is you need to have a bin out. That's, that's what this 13 is.
No, I know. That's what I think, but maybe.
That's what this 13 is. We already have, if there's a mix between what's recyclable and what's regular trash, the hauler doesn't.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know that that's in our policy.
I think it is.
Is it? Okay. Wait a minute, I have to, I don't have the side-by-side here, but I have to go back.
I believe it is too.
Yeah, okay.
I think that was a change we made.
Last year.
Okay. But is this, is this an adjunct or are we replacing?
It's two different things. This number 13 here, mandatory recycling, is what Mr. McGrath spoke about this evening, about if you don't have a bin out, they don't have to take your trash. That's what this mandatory recycling is. That's different than what's in the policy concerning if there's a mix of recyclable items with regular trash. They don't have to take that at all.
Right.
That, that's in the policy. That's in the policy already. Pretty sure of that, I don't have it, let me see it side by side. That's not mandatory recycling.
All right, so this regulation is not a policy, this is a regulation, we're adopting a new regulation as opposed to amending our policy?
That's right, this is separate from your policies.
Okay.
But could be included in the policy.
We'd have that amendment to the policy.
Or at least reference it, yeah. So the consensus is to drop 13 for the second reading, and then.
That's correct.
Potentially revise.
Twelve.
Just potentially revise 12.
Probably not, but.
Oh, no, wait.
There's a potential, I would agree.
Okay.
So I could do the first reading without, without the mandatory recycling? Yes. Without 13? Well, okay, that's.
Yes.
I don't know how it's written in front of you.
Just say, adopt the, adopt the regulation.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the first reading of the solid waste user fee regulations adopted by the Board of Selectmen on June 17, 2002, by adding the following. Effective July 1, 2013, the weekly solid waste limit will be three 35 gallon bags of barrels per home.
Second. Motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? One thing I'd add is that regarding the reduction in number of barrels of 35 pound bags, I'm in favor of that reduction going down to two barrels of 35 pound bags.
I would second that. Are you making a motion?
No, I just wanted to be clear.
He's just making a comment based on.
And I support that, I'm in agreement with that. Because again, if we all believe in their goal that they came in here with, then I think your suggestion best fits what they're trying to accomplish.
Any further discussion?
Just in relation to, you know, trying to effectuate and get to their goal, you know, I don't think there's anybody here that's opposed to trying to get to their goal, it's just a question as to whether or not, you know, what method, how do we get there? And the means by which we do it, and the timeline to do it, you know, and, you know, that would be, maybe not for a lot of the households, but from a public relations standpoint, from a public policy standpoint, it would be a quantum leap. And even if it isn't going to affect anybody. Once in a while, people put some out, now I can't put it out, you know, if I put out one or two, I can put out three now, now I can't. So I just think that the phasing of it in is a reasonable approach in trying to achieve the goal. I understand exactly what's being proposed, I'm not in total disagreement with it, but I think the timing and the phasing of it in is probably a more reasonable approach.
Saying I'm unreasonable?
No, no, more reasonable. Not unreasonable.
All right. Nothing further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Oh, opposed? Did you say anything?
What are we, we're voting on?
First reading.
First reading, but also, it's his motion, it's the first reading, it takes away mandatory recycling, at least a reduction in barrels.
It's a move in the right direction.
Yeah.
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, back to item eight, 18, public hearing, June and October town meeting dates for 2013.
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the Town of North Reading, Chapter 241, I move to set the dates for the 2013 town meeting as follows. June 3, 2013, October 7, 2013.
Second. Any discussion?
Just, we've looked at the holiday.
There are no conflicts.
No conflicts.
None. The 7th isn't a holiday?
No.
I was just looking at that.
7th, 7th what, June?
October 7.
October.
We're okay.
Does it seriously go into the holiday cycle?
I'm sorry.
When we have a meeting, town meeting, typically if we don't finish it, we go into Thursday.
No conflicts. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous? I guess that brings us to the town administrators' report.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, on the revised agenda, there is. There is a, an item on the change in name of the capital planning committee. Is it on there?
Yes, there's a motion, and I'm going to bring it up under my report.
Oh, sorry, I apologize.
Not a problem, you don't apologize at all. Board members, I would propose the change in the name from the capital planning committee to the capital improvement planning, improvement planning committee, just for clarification purposes, so that it's not confused with our community planning commission, which goes by the letter C P C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to affirm the following change in name from capital planning committee as voted on October 15, 2012, by the Board of Selectmen to capital improvement planning committee.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Four zero one answers.
It's a roll call vote.
Roll call vote?
That's what it's asking for.
No, it's.
No.
No, it's wrong.
Okay.
Okay, no she carries.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, let me proceed. As you know, at October town meeting, we appropriated a sum of money to complete the construction of the little school retaining wall. I'm pleased to report that that contract was put out to bid, the bid has been awarded, and a notice to proceed has been issued. What that means is that the work will be completed during the winter months, and that that wall will be totally reconstructed and rebuilt for the spring season. I think there were some concerns about the fact that we would get that done. I want to thank the D P W Director, Mr. Connavale, who worked closely with the school administration, Carl Nelson and Wayne Hartaker, to get this project out to bid and ensure that it will be done this coming winter, so it's going to be done during the winter season.
How the bids come in?
Excellent. It was a tremendous level of interest, I think there were upwards of 10 to 12 bids that came in. Some of them were way above cost, but the low bid came in within the project budget.
Do you have a number?
I think it was about $100,000. And that's just, just a number off the top of my head. The second item on my list is a copy of the revenue report, excuse me, not the revenue report, but the revenue report as of 12/31, which is our six month accounting of our revenues that are received halfway through the fiscal year. I'd like to take just a minute, go through it with you.
Thank you.
I think the items that are noteworthy, without discussing each item individually, is motor vehicle excise. You'll see that we have a budgeted amount of $2,014,000. We've collected 14%. That's not unusual. As we do our major excise tax commitment during the month of February, those funds come in in March. So the fact that we're at 14% is not necessarily indicative of a problem. However, I would mention that motor vehicle excise tax revenues for the last three or four years have been relatively flat. In the past, they've been increasing in the range of 2% to 2.5% a year. We no longer see that. The good news is we don't see a decline, but we're not seeing it rise at the level that it has done in the past. Penalties and interest, penalties and interest represents the amount that we collect on delinquent billings. So it's not money that we earn or money that we have in the bank, it's when bills are due and don't get paid. And you can see that at this point, we are, collected as of December 31, $137,000. So we will exceed our revenue estimates on that if the trend continues, and there's no reason to believe it won't. The alumina taxes represents monies that come to the town from the Hillview, and this is also money from the Town of Danvers that comes in. These are monies that we budget within our revenue plan. The Hillview money does not come in until late June. So keep in mind, it's predicated upon the Hillview having a successful season. As you know, I think in fiscal year 2012, we did not reach the number that was budgeted for payment of alumina taxes. We're anticipating, and we're hopeful, that that takes place this coming fiscal year, but you can never really be sure until we get beyond the winter season and we get into the spring months. Just in relation to that, again, I would caution the board and the administration about budgeting that money for anything. And that, you know, we shouldn't be factoring that in necessarily for our general operating expenses, and. Because, again, because of the fluidity of it and the seasonality, depending upon the weather, and we ran into a situation, as you say, last fiscal year, where they weren't able to meet, you know, what we had established as what we thought they should be able to come up with. So I think, and again, the commission for years has been advocating for the town administration not to factor those receipts into their general operating budget. Don't count on it. If we get it, that's great. So I, I think it's a good cautionary note. I think if, I think we should take their advice, and I think we should not necessarily factor that in. The next item represents tax title. It does not count, there's an estimated receipt that's shown here, just so you can keep track of what we have budgeted. Then you'll see that the amount we've collected in tax title is $275,000. That's up from where we would have been a year ago, this money rolls into free cash. It says a result of some aggressive tax title collections over the past years, we had some major properties that owed taxes. We began the foreclosure and eviction proceedings on some of those properties. That resulted in substantial tax title monies coming in, and that's reflected here. But again, it's just for the purposes of showing what the number is, so that you're aware of the fact that we've collected an amount to this point this year. Trash fees, we budgeted $967,000. As I think mentioned before, we subsidize, the trash budget was subsidized from other receipts from the general fund to the tune of about $35,000 in fiscal year 2012. We're hopeful that we meet our trash revenue collections for this coming fiscal year, and you can see that we're at about 47%. It's a number that we're watching, but it doesn't necessarily cause us any major concerns at this point. I'd like to skip down to licenses and permits. Those are primarily the building department and the fee, excuse me, licensing that are approved by the Board of Selectmen and other boards and committees. We're at 57% as of December 31. It's probably indicative of the fact that at the end of the calendar year, there's a lot of license money that comes in that doesn't come in over the course of the year. That amount of collections is not necessarily sustainable throughout the year, so we do need to be careful in terms of how we watch that money. Fines and forfeits, those are monies that come in primarily as a result of moving violations, parking tickets and such through our police department. The number is on the low end so far. We don't budget a lot for it, so we're able to absorb any shortfall through other local receipt line items. Investment income, that is amount, the money that we collect from monies that are in the bank. The $140,000 that you see reflected here is reflective of the fact that we're able to invest some of the monies that came from the bond proceeds associated with the school project. And that's the reason why the number is higher, and will continue going forward. Municipal Medicaid is reimbursement services that are provided through the school department. Little bit of paperwork involved in filing and chasing these monies down. The fact that it's at 29% is something that we're making note of, but we've also dropped this number over the years to be at its current budget of $50,000. Meal stacks is good news, we're ahead of projections, we're at 69%, our $104,000 collected throughout the year. It's good news, especially in a soft economy, the fact that our meals tax revenues are up. Keep in mind, that's a 1% tax on any meals that are served in North Reading. It's collected by the Department of Revenue, and then it comes to us on a monthly basis. And then the only other thing that we show here is miscellaneous, non-reoccurring. These are reimbursements that we receive from organizations such as the Federal Emergency Management Agency. When there's a storm event, we have an opportunity to collect for our costs, and those monies roll back in as miscellaneous, non-reoccurring revenue. We don't, we do have an amount that we show here, and you can see that we've actually collected more than what we would have budgeted for this fiscal year. The other items that remain on the sheet, real estate tax collections, state receipts, S B A B, which is school building assistance money, personal property, are monies that we will collect throughout the year. And I think, once we complete our January revenue report, and we get into February, you'll see that these numbers will true up going forward. So the fact that we are at 47% collected at the end of the year is not unusual. I think it puts us in a pretty good position for meeting our revenue estimates for fiscal year 2013.
Mr. Billy Coon, just going back to the payment of alumina taxes specifically related to Hillview, is that typically made in a lump sum, or is there payments made during the course of the year?
One lump sum.
Lump sum.
At the end of the year, and we do budget for it, just so we're clear.
I know, I know we have, but Mr. Frisco, maybe you can have a discussion with Hillview, so we, for planning purposes, can have an idea of, or that we should be expecting anything? Any question? Good. Outside of that. Go ahead. For receipts, are we going to be adding ALS to this?
Yes, I'm actually going to be talking about ALS separately, but we.
For the future, would it be here? No, it would not be here.
No, it comes in and it's dedicated to the ambulance fund, it's ambulance revenue. And as I go to the next part of my report, when we review the revenue projections for next fiscal year, I'll touch a little bit upon where those monies get dropped into the budget.
Thank you.
The next piece is the revenue report that was discussed at our most recent meeting, our financial planning team meeting that we had last week. And we did have an opportunity to discuss revenues, and this is really the first cut now that we're at the beginning of the year. And it's important to note that our revenues for fiscal year 2014, which is the year beginning July 1, 2013 through June 30 of 2014, are flat. And so we have no increased budgeted for state aid. We are waiting for the governor's House Budget 1 proposal, which is due to be released later this month. We will react to the governor's number and will adjust our revenue projections. But we have kept our receipts flat, because that's the best we can do with the knowledge that we have available to us right now. I don't see a reason to make any cuts, no, nor is there any reason for optimism that we should be increasing our receipts. Two major categories are unrestricted government aid and Chapter 70, which is school aid. You'll keep in mind that a major portion of the unrestricted general government aid is what used to be called lottery aid. They no longer call it lottery aid, it's been combined with a couple of different categories, and simply called unrestricted local government aid. And in the past, we've seen some cuts in that area. You will recall that as part of the governor's 9C cuts for this year, he targeted a 1% reduction in that line item. 1% would be equal to under $20,000. We have not seen the results of that, nor have we budgeted for next year. So, excuse me, that's the substance of the state aid. I should mention, and I skipped over the fact that as part of the initial calculation, we include an increase for Proposition 2.5, which is just our levy limit growth, which is $875,000. And we've also increased, we've shown an amount for new growth. The 2.5 percentage is just a mathematical calculation. It's 2.5% of the town's current year levy, times 2.5% equals $875,242. The number that probably causes us the most concern is the amount that we show here for new growth, and we've budgeted $325,000. That number's been dropping. It's been dropping throughout the 2000s. At one time, if you were to take this spreadsheet and go out a couple of years, you'll have seen one year that we brought in new growth of approximately $800,000. And now we're all the way down to $325,000. That's the value of new construction coming onto the town's tax rolls. So we're pessimistic to the extent that we're going to receive new growth. It's reflected in these numbers here. It's reflected in the fact that if you look at the growth in the town's tax levy, new growth. growth plus 2 and 1/2, it's about a million dollars. So keep in mind that within the confines of a $55 million operation, we'll see about a million dollars in growth as a result of the Prop 2 and 1/2 plus new growth. Any questions about the first two items before I move down the page? We talked a little bit about local receipts and I won't get into much detail, but what I will say to you is motor vehicle is budgeted at $2 million. We've increased penalties and interest by $20,000 reflective of the current trend that we've taken licenses and permits and we budgeted them at $350,000 because as there is a softening in the number of businesses that apply for new permits, we don't feel that we can necessarily budget for that amount of money going forward. And then lastly, we've shown an increase in the meals tax of $50,000. So the sum total of those is a slight change in our estimated receipts. Please keep in mind that they're about flat at this point as we look at what our local receipts will be. Any questions on that piece at all?
Just in relation to the trash fee again, I mean, our actuals were 923, 924.
Right.
We're budgeting?
960. Yeah, what's-
We're not going up on our fees.
We haven't gone up-
We haven't picked up any new customers, really. So just curious as to-
We're going to have to take a very close look at how we calculate our trash fee for the coming year to make sure that we break even in this category. I think I had mentioned that some years we collect a little bit more, some years we collect a little bit less. A number of years ago, the town was, the trash fee was only covering a portion of the trash budget, that the general fund was subsidizing a major portion. And over a period of time, we've reconciled that and tried to bring those things closer together. I feel comfortable that we will take a very close look at what comprises and how we get to $960,000 in revenues for 2014. But to the extent we stay away from an increase in the fee, that's what we obviously want to do at this point.
What's left in the solid base stabilization fund, Greg?
I think, I think there was a comment that the chairs and vice chairs that we spent all of it. I think we probably have about $25,000 left.
Okay, so-
So there's a little bit left at this point.
The last year, we offset that number by $59,000.
Right.
To balance the budget.
Right.
Other financing sources, there are a couple of things here that are particularly noteworthy and I just want to point out what they are. The debt stabilization fund. You'll see that for this present year, the final 2013 budget is $484,000. And we're estimating that we would utilize $484,000 from the debt stabilization fund to be applied toward the 2014 budget. We indicate a transfer from the cell tower account. If you look at what we budgeted for fiscal year 2013, we used some of those monies to go toward one-time expenditures. What we did was we put some of that money into savings. If you recall, we added money to the stabilization fund and such. And we use some of the monies that were, had accrued in our cell tower account to go toward other purposes. So what we're looking to do is drop it down to $200,000. That'll allow us to spend some money, but it'll also allow us to save some money. The goal in the cell tower account is not to spend every dollar that we collect. What we're looking to do is build up a savings and continue to use that savings to offset future costs or unknown costs that we would have. Selectman Prisco had pointed out here earlier, we have shown an amount here to be transferred from the ambulance reserve. The amounts that are shown here do not reflect any increases as a result of ALS. Those have not been built into the budget at this point. That will require further discussions with the ALS committee in terms of what we realistically think our revenues will be for the current year. And that what we will be able to do is then look at building in additional revenues into this budget to offset costs associated with the fire department and ambulance service. But they're not reflected in the numbers that you see today. The other items that you see here is utilization of free cash. I think as I had stated, we do not anticipate at this early stage utilizing free cash to offset the budget. We did utilize a portion of it in the last fiscal year to offset some of our one-time costs. Those would be one-time costs that we don't want to budget for on a permanent basis going forward. And the use of free cash applied toward the budget is something that I would want to discourage. So overall, the revenue projection is flat revenues at this stage. And we're waiting, the next update will be is when we receive the governor's House 1 budget at the end of the month, we'll make revisions to the Chapter 70 and unrestricted local aid categories on the sheet and run it by the chairs and vice chairs one more time. Questions about it?
Any questions?
Just as a follow-up, your next sheet is the ALS.
Next one's ALS.
Yeah, so that will give us an indication as to what we have for-
Right.
... additional revenues collected in order to offset some of the costs.
About bringing in about $15,350 a month in new revenues attributable to ALS.
So that's the delta, that's the difference between what we were collecting before.
Yes.
And how we were billing before and what we're billing now.
That's right.
Okay.
And so that's what our increases in revenues is about $15,350. You'll note that we've also, as part of that, we've had to pay $22,000 to other ALS providers and we paid $9,000 for callback of fire department paramedics to respond. Going forward, we'd expect that those costs will be reduced, reduced because of the fact that we will have more paramedics on staff and so that our out-of-pocket costs will be somewhat less. But the program is up and running. It became effective on April 9th. That's the date that's shown on the report that you have here. There's nothing magical about that other than the fact that we've accounted for revenues through November 10th of 2012, which is more than a six-month period. So I think we're pretty comfortable that the ALS service, as we've put it together, is generating enough revenues to look at increasing the amount that we would dedicate to the ambulance reserve account for fiscal year 2014 by some amount. And we're hopeful that that amount is in the range of $184,000 to $185,000.
Are we factoring in here somewhere the additional stipend being paid to our firefighters who are certified as a cost of ALS?
We-
I don't see it, that's why.
We budgeted our, the stipends and the paramedic school training costs. And I think we paid for that with one-time revenues. I think we paid for it out of free cash, if I'm not mistaken.
No, no, I understand that. I'm just saying, as we're looking at the additional revenues we're collecting-
Right.
... costs associated with running the program. But I don't see in here is the additional stipends, costs associated with having our own staff doing-
Yeah, and we're going to need to, I would need to have a conversation with our new fire chief. We need to bid those costs into the budget that will be submitted for the board's consideration going forward because, as you said, we need to have a true accounting of what those costs will be.
Yeah, you know, and when we finally adopted this whole thing, again, we had certainly getting enhanced service and having our own firefighters provided and that's, that was the goal. You know, and if it could pay for itself, great. If it's not paying for itself, that's okay too, so long as it's close to a break even and the enhanced service is worth the additional, the additional cost. We just need to quantify it and track it a little bit initially.
Currently, whatever's, the stipends for the people, the existing force now that's under training, I think there's three involved, is covered in this year's budget.
I understand.
All right, so it's paid for. We've discussed getting together to take a look at 2014 from the point of view of the revenue flow and the cost. And the goal is not to add and add a minimum break even. In other words, don't add additional employees unless they're covered by the revenue stream. And, you know, my guess is that we're going to be able to do what we set out to do, but we don't have the numbers at this point.
Okay. I just don't want that to get lost in the equation, that's all.
It's not going to get lost. And it'll have to be a piece of the process-
For a budget.
For the budget.
Very much so.
Which is coming up in a couple of months.
Yep. The other items that I have, and I'm going to go through fairly quickly, there was some certificates that council asked the board to sign in the signature folder for recording of deeds from John Hatch, trustee for Ruth Hatch. These were the parcels on Lindor Road and Dowell Drive, consisting of five and seven acres. The board approved this back on September 4th. We received the deeds back from the Hatch trustees right around the holidays of Christmas. We have since forwarded them to town council. That's the reason why they're coming to you now. I'm pleased to report that as of the date that those documents were signed by the Hatch trustees, all the taxes have been paid on the property. And that's a requirement that they all be paid for them to come to the board. So, once you sign off on these, we forward this to town council and the deeds get recorded at the registry in the town then, has ownership in them.
It looks like there's a notary provision there.
Oh, that's me.
Anyone do it?
I can do it.
Free acting deeds.
Yep, I can do it. I don't have my stamp.
Just refresh my memory on this, I'm sorry.
One of them is Darrell.
It's landlocked between Darrell and Lindor.
Remember, we were talking about where the access was off of Lindor?
Right.
We couldn't find it.
Five properties.
Right.
One of the maps showed access on the Lindor that really isn't there.
It's not there.
Right. And then we, I don't think it was unanimous vote to-
That's right. It was not unanimous vote.
Although, didn't the minister show that as a unanimous vote?
We didn't do that in a little recently, did we?
No, I'm-
No, no, no.
No, no, this is back at some time.
That's why I'm trying to go back and look at it.
No, it wasn't.
No, 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 no. Yep, no, full one.
Right, I was against it, right?
You were.
Probably.
Oh, leaving?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I just wanted to take that and pass it down. What I'm handing out is a reconciliation of our snow removal costs year-to-date. Now that we're in snow season, I want the board to be aware of what we're spending on snow removal.
I need one to go along with us.
Oh, I'm sorry. And you can see the amount that's been expended is $97,662. It's broken down by DPW, which is overtime, hired help, which is subcontractors. And you'll see that there's only been one storm where subcontractors have been brought in and that was the five-inch storm, which occurred on the weekend of December 29th and December 30th. Material costs, maintenance costs, fuel costs, meal tickets, which is a nominal sum that goes to the drivers, which encourages them to remain on the road for the duration of the storm. And as you can see, we then break down each event by what the cost is for the total storm and then what the cost is for the course of, total cost is over the course of the year. So we've had only one major event at this point, again, a five-inch storm. There were a total of 17 DPW employees that were on for that event. And that would be the event of the 29th and 30th. Unfortunately, it hit us on a weekend and if you look at what our costs are, our overtime costs are always higher on a Sunday. The DPW contract has language in it that provides Sunday employees with double time. So once we hit 12 o'clock midnight, we incur double time costs. And that's just unfortunate reality when these storms do strike. We do have $175,000 budgeted for this fiscal year for snow removal, so we are within that amount of money at this point. And we will work diligently to remain within that amount of money. Obviously being cognizant of the fact that we need to have sufficient materials on hand in anticipation of events. So what we typically like to do is buy and have those materials available because when a big event hits, you want to have those materials on hand. Any questions about this at all?
I'd just like to make a comment on it, if I could.
Mr. Prisco?
You know, last week, you may, some of you, you may, some of you may have seen my note regarding my question on the backup on the overtime. And I have no problem with the amount of hours that we need to.
Excuse me.
But I found it a little odd that we had several employees that had a set of hours, seven and a half hours on the 30th of December, I'll just use in one example. And then below them, they had four hours on the same day, same rate, snow and ice, all the same. I'd ask Greg to provide me the time cards because I just didn't understand it. No one else could explain it to me. And the time card was clear. And I think the practice that's being used, somebody was out in the road for seven and a half hours. They left, they went home and then short, a time later, they were called back in for another hour, but they got the charge a total of four hours. So they only worked, you know, so they worked seven and a half, they came in, worked another hour, they got a whole total of another, four hours, but they got to go home. And, you know, so we paid, you know, four hours for an hour bit of work. I just don't understand the reasoning for sending someone home. If we're paying for four hours, why are we not taking advantage of the person, since we're paying them to continue their work? It could be multiple things. I know the DPW director has these guys doing multiple things when they're, when they're called in. So I just have a question. I just need an explanation.
We'll look into it. I understand your concerns. I can tell you that the practice that we have in place is, is a good one, that when the employees you hit, hit the nail on the head, the employees were here for seven and a half hours. So they were here from midnight to 7:30 a.m. They then went off duty and at about 11 a.m. in the morning, the police department discovered that there were some slippery spots around town and they were dispatched to some streets out around Martin's Pond. And as you know, they worked for about an hour. That process works well in terms of the police department kind of being the eyes and ears out in the community and looking for areas that may be slippery and may need additional attention. But you're, certainly your comments about the timing involved and how people personally deployed once they're here is something we have to take a close look at.
I don't have a problem with the way it was called in.
Of course.
I just have a problem, Kim, we have an employee come in for an hour, we pay him for a total of four, but we send him home.
Of course.
I think there's other things they can be doing. I mean, they're being paid to work, so I don't understand the rationale. So they actually got paid 11 and a half hours for eight and a half hours of work.
Yes.
And I don't think that's what, I don't think it was ever intended to be that way. I, you know, that's a management issue, I think, and I think it just needs to be addressed. And I just wanted an explanation on it.
Thank you very much. I have one last item, which is pleased to announce that we had our new CPC administrator planner start right after the New Year's holiday. Her name is Danielle McKnight. And if you've had an opportunity to stop by the CPC office, she's very pleasant and she's welcomed on board with her skills and her expertise and we're looking forward to having her be part of our team. One of the things that she's immediately immersed herself in is advised her that we have a zoning proposal involving the marijuana dispensing facilities. And one of the questions that comes up for the board to consider is, there will likely be a zoning bylaw submitted at some point for your consideration in terms of either temporary or permanent prohibition of those facilities being located in North Reading. It's one of the things that she's working on. And she's also had an opportunity to attend the Northeast Regional Collaborative Planning Association meeting with MAPC. So I know that she's quite involved already and I just wanted to announce the fact that she began her employment and she's been here for about, just under two weeks now. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy Coons. Over to you, business. Let's start with, sure, if you want me to. Okay. Just real quick, it's, you're all looking at us probably funny tonight. It's not by coincidence that we all have a form of an orange tie on tonight. Sad to report that about a week, a little more than a week ago, a respected member of the community lost his battle with, with cancer. Kurt Collison was diagnosed several years ago with a, with a brain tumor. And upon his diagnosis, his family and friends set up what was called, a group called Kurt's Crusaders in an effort to raise money and awareness of the disease. And a part of, of the group, what they would do is they would wear orange to any event that they went to. So in keeping with that, last week, at his memorial service, everybody there wore orange. wore orange. It was a sea of orange. And Mike Prisco asked that, or made a recommendation that we do the same tonight, just in honor of him. He was a great family man, friend, community activist. He, he did a lot with local sports, and it's kind of hard, because my daughter and his daughter are friendly, but it was, it was sad news to hear. And I just wanted to give, on behalf of this board, give our condolences to the Collison family. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just one quick thing. The newly-formed Capital Improvement Planning Committee met for its first meeting last Wednesday, and elected their, their officers, a chair, a vice chair, and clerk. We started the process of, of how we're going to go forward, and decided that we're going to meet Wednesday at four o'clock till at least the second week in March. And with our goals to vet the, the requests, and meet with department heads, and put a recommendation together for the, for the Board of Selectmen. So, we're excited about that. And that's it for me, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary.
First thing is, I mentioned to the administration that, you know, everybody received their tax bill, and it seemed to be percentage-wise, a little more than what people anticipated. So, Greg, I think you're working on some sort of an explanation for the board to present to the public, probably in our next meeting.
If not before.
If not before. Just seems to have been exponentially larger than what people had anticipated, including myself on a percentage basis. So.
Can I just add? My understanding was, because we have four quarters, and the first two are estimates, and the last two are actuals, the whole load of, the entire load for the increase related to the schools is going to be covered over this quarter and the next quarter. And then next year, it will be spread out over four quarters. So, you'll see a little reduction.
That's, I'm not disagreeing with you. But, you know, I, I think it's, it's more than a twenty, twenty-second soundbite, you know? And I, and I think there needs to be an explanation by the board as to what, what's occurred. Because when people have seen across, boy, twenty-three percent increase, as opposed to the eleven or twelve percent that they were anticipating, they're deserving of an explanation.
So, you weren't questioning the numbers?
That's why I brought it up.
No, no, I'm not questioning the numbers specifically, other than, you know, I've had some inquiries. Again, it's not a twenty-second soundbite explanation to people.
I misunderstood you.
And I think we need to, I think we need to collectively put out an explanation, and Greg and his administration are working on that. So, just to let people know that they'll be getting a more clear explanation as to exactly what has occurred and, and why. The other thing is, you probably read in the paper, and, I don't know, Bob, I don't know if your kids had Ellen Adele as a teacher. She may have retired. She retired in mid-nineties, ninety-six maybe, something like that. But phenomenal individual.
My kids definitely.
Huh?
My kids were.
Right. And I, I tell you, you know, I'm a product of North Reading Public Schools, and had a lot of.
She was a teacher when I was on the school committee.
Yes, she was, yeah. She, she spent thirty years in the system as, as an English teacher. And, you know, as we go through school, we have, you know, some great teachers, and again, we've had lots of teachers come through North Reading High School and through the North Reading School System. But Ellie Dell stood out more than most, just because of her, her ability to, to connect with the kids, and also, you know, mentor them, teach them, and as a result of her personality, which was extremely bubbly, maintained relationships with, with kids that she had thirty, forty years old. Again, I graduated forty years ago. But just a phenomenal individual, lived a great life, but her service to this community well documented. A yearbook was dedicated to her way back when. But she passed away last week, and I just didn't want the opportunity to pass, go by without mentioning her, her contribution to the community, to the children in the North Reading Public School System. The impact that she had was really significant in relation to all the teachers that I ever had. And I think anybody that had her would have felt the same way. So, she, she lived a great, good, long life, eighty-seven years. You never would have known it. I saw her, the last time I saw her was at Frank Keery's retirement party last, last summer. And still bubbly and effervescent as ever, and I never would have guessed, you know, how old she was until I read it in the newspaper. And, and, well, Turo's knows her very well, I knew her very well, and extremely highly regarded, not just by the students, but by her peers in the administration over the years. So, I want to thank Ellie publicly for the service that she provided to not just myself, but all the kids in North Reading Public Schools for thirty years. Thank you.
Mr. Prisco.
Since this is our first meeting of the new year, I wanted to wish everybody on the board and everyone at home a happy new year. It's amazing, seems like it was so long ago, but this is our first meeting. In your tax bill, just going on that, there was an insert in the tax bill, and some information on the taxation aid fund. I wanted to make sure that everybody in the board was aware that it was in your tax bill. Just wanted to point out to the people listening at home, there is a donation contribution form at the bottom of it. I would really appreciate it if the community would consider making some small donation, whether it's a dollar, five dollars, whatever it can be, to help go towards that taxation aid funded. It's designed to help the elderly, disabled, and those who need some temporary tax relief. We actually have our first meeting tomorrow at nine o'clock here. We actually have some applications to go over and review, so I'm excited. I'm really looking forward, and I'm happy some people have submitted forms to take advantage of the taxation relief. You'd call into town hall here at the collector's office, the tax office, if you need some, if you have some questions on it, you need some help. But I am really happy that we're moving forward with this program. On the back of it, I just want to point out there are some frequently asked questions. We also did state right up front that the reason why the tax bill looked so much larger than you had seen in the past, we just mentioned that it does include the increased cost of the school. And I think it would be great, Greg, if you did put together something. In regards to that question about those town homeowners that have escrow accounts with their real estate companies, their mortgage companies, should they make a call or check on, should we make them aware that they may have to make an increase to that escrow to cover any increase in the taxes?
Typically, the mortgage holder notifies the mortgagee of the additional amount they have to deposit into an escrow account. It's typically how it's done.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't catch, catch anybody blind on that.
I've already seen one notice that was sent to somebody, that they were already notified by their mortgage company, the escrow is going to increase. The, the only problem with that is that if it's a significant jump dish to you, what's going to happen is, is they're going to have a, they're going to have to wait a whole year, but they'll get a check back, because the escrow will be over the legal limit. But again, mortgage company will be holding on to your money, unfortunately.
Couple last, couple things. I want to recognize Officer Tilton, Officer Conley, Detective Dorsey, and Lieutenant Zimmerman for participating in that child's wish, that Nathan Norman, who would wish to get letters and cards from local fire and police and EMTs. And participating in that, I thought was a really nice gesture on their part, and I think was a wonderful thing in tribute to that boy's request. So, I think they did a wonderful thing. And the last thing is, I wanted to let everyone know that I did officially pull my papers to run for reelection. So, I'm officially announcing I am going to run again for Board of Selectmen. If you're interested in signing my nomination papers, they're here, and I, I hope that I get the opportunity on May seventh to continue my work on the board. But if I don't, it certainly has been a great experience for me, and I certainly do enjoy working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Mr. Missary.
I want to wish everybody on the board, and everyone on the outside, a happy new year. Mike stole my thunder, but.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right, Michael. Just a brief update, the Community Impact Team, we have had a meeting since the beginning of the year, and our website is now up officially. We hired a company called, where is it? I think I've gone by it here. Community Communications, they put the website together. This is a charitable organization, or, and they've done a very good job on it for a minimal cost. The website, the original domain name that we took out was N R C I T dot org. We've changed that, so the website now is, can be reached at W W W northreadingcit.com. And if you go on the website, you'll see that it's, Philly will organize their resource areas, that are, a couple of documents are still being put together to add to it. But I think it's well thought out, a lot of work was put in. Erica Hansen spent a fair amount of time working with the Community Communications, to do the hard work, to get all the input. We worked together to try to organize the website in such a way that it would be very useful. It's up and running. It's being paid for by the grant money that, I guess we finally got the grant money in, the twenty-five thousand dollars finally came in.
It came in.
Originally, it was going to be fifty thousand, but that's been cut to the twenty-five as a result of a crunch on the state budget. So, that's well underway, and there is a date scheduled. We are planning to participate in the, I think it's in August, let me find the date here. All right, everybody. National Night Out, we're going to do a National Night Out. And it'll be, it's scheduled for August sixth. Details to come away. And that's about all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Missary. My colleagues this evening will be focused on the school building project. Probably all of you who have driven by the area have seen that there's a tremendous amount of tree cutting that has taken place over the last week, week and a half. There was, the plan was changed back in the fall, which resulted in additional tree clearing up behind what is the sitting middle school that borders along Tower Hill, School Hill Lane. That was done as a result of budgetary issues that I'm sure you all have heard about, that we're wrestling with. That was done in an effort to keep a tremendous amount of tonnage of fill on site. That was done at the recommendation of the OPM, the architect, to the tune of the savings of about four hundred thousand dollars, with the amount of fill we were able to keep on site. What was not fully understood by the building committee, which I am a member of, was the extent of the additional tree clearing that had to take place. The committee itself became aware of it last Tuesday evening, when the residents of School Hill Lane and Tower Hill came to the secondary school building committee meeting. As I did that evening, I do this evening as well, apologized to them for the change that was taken, that had taken place up there without any prior notification to that particular neighborhood or neighborhoods. But since that time, I've walked the site, other members of the building committee have walked the site. The architect and the project manager, along with the construction manager, have undertaken efforts to mitigate what has occurred up in that particular area. And in fact, this evening, at, I believe, five o'clock, there was a meeting held with those neighbors, along with the professionals on the project, landscape architect, which should have been presented was some ideas on how the area is going to be mitigated, which includes potentially reducing the height of the landform that will be proposed to be up there, additional plantings, and the like, to mitigate the removal of those additional trees. The misstep from the committee was not having this neighborhood meeting prior to the change being implemented. The mitigation that's ongoing now is what would have been done before. So, I'm hopeful that we're going to come to a resolution up there that's satisfactory to that particular neighborhood. In addition, regarding the school building project, as I'm sure everyone has read, heard about, and also regarding the tree clearing, I think every member of this board has been approached, either in person, by phone, by email, by residents, whether of that neighborhood or other areas of town, regarding the tree clearing that took place up there. So, I wanted to address that this evening. Concerning the general project up there, as everyone has read in the transcript or in patch, there are budgetary issues, quite clearly. And it's with extreme disappointment that I must say that it appears as though we will have to come back to the community and ask for more money. It's, like I said, extreme disappointment that I must state that, because I've been stating over and over again that this project will come in on time and on budget. There are several reasons why we're in the position that we're in. It needs a full dialogue and a full explanation that just wouldn't have the time to do so this evening. But what the secondary school building committee has looked at are dates to come forward to the community for informational sessions. As of this evening, the dates that are proposed for informational sessions are February seventh, February twenty-eighth, and March fourteenth. And if I can just explain a little bit as to why those dates were chosen. The February seventh date was chosen, and it maybe, I would expect, there'd be further discussion about moving that date closer in time, as opposed to waiting to February seventh. But at this particular time, the committee has an estimate based on sixty percent completion of the construction documents. And I know this is very difficult to understand. If you've never been involved in a project, it's difficult for the committee to understand until we had spent countless hours at meetings to understand the process. The next big date is February, well, January twenty-eighth. That's when the ninety percent construction documents will be complete. From there, we will have a, an estimate in late February on those ninety percent documents. So, we won't have any additional information until late January than what we have right now. The goal at the February seventh informational session would to explain to the public the process that we're engaged in currently. Then, the February twenty-eighth date would be a date in which we'd be able to explain to the public, at least give the public, a good range, estimate of a range of the dollars that we'd be looking for. On March eleventh, another key date, is the date by which the construction manager will provide to the community what's called a GMP, a Guaranteed Maximum Price. That Guaranteed Maximum Price will be based upon the design as originally proposed to the public. There has been some modifications. I would, in my layman's terms, I would say that was more cosmetic in nature, but the design as originally proposed, that includes the administrative office, the tennis courts, the team rooms, are all included in the, the design in the construction documents as that moves forward. So, we will have a ninety percent guaranteed maximum price on March eleventh. That's why we had proposed, coming back to the public on March fourteenth, relaying that information, having a discussion regarding that particular number. And then, the committee has discussed proposed dates to come to the community at a special town meeting and a special election. As of now, the dates that are being considered are Monday, March eighteenth, for a special town meeting. The dates that are sort of unsettled for the special election, the dates, two dates that are out there are March twentieth and March twenty-third. The initial response from the church was the March twentieth date, may not be doable. The March twenty-third date is doable for the church, but there is some concern that I learned over the weekend, as a result of that being the Tom Sunday weekend. That's more of a concern for some members of the committee. And I know that Mr. Karucci, the chairperson of Secondary School Building Committee, is going to have further discussions with St. Teresa's as to whether or not the March twentieth date could work. At our next board. At our next board meeting, two weeks from this evening, the Secondary School Building Committee will come before this board, as well as the school committee, to request the Board of Selectmen to set a special town meeting date and a special election date. That's where we stand as of this evening. I just thought it was important to give the public a general overview of where we stand and what we unfortunately will have to do. So, that's what I have to say this evening regarding, if anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer questions that board members have. Mrs. Rowley, who is sitting here, I know you'll be in attendance at a CPC meeting tomorrow evening, so. And that's, that's all I have. Motion to adjourn, or motion to go into executive session? We still have a need to go back in? Wish, wish to go back in? We're not happy to. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion's adjourned, thank you.